Okay.
Good evening and welcome to the Mill Creek Township School District Committee Meetings for Monday, June the 10th, 2024. First meeting this evening will be the Instruction and Student Services Committee, followed by the Personnel and Policy Committee Meeting, and concluding with the Finance and Operations Committee. There'll also be a Committee of the Whole Meeting this evening, following the committee meetings. While we're encouraged the public to attend in person, all meetings will be streamed live on YouTube and will be recorded for future viewing purposes. You can also view this evening's agendas, as well as several additional informational items on our website, In addition, please visit us and like us on our Facebook page, Mill Creek Township School District. I'd also like to remind all speakers, core team members, and board members to speak clearly and distinctly into their microphone, so you can be heard by all of our attendees this evening, whether they are here in person or viewing us on YouTube. During each of the committee meetings, we provide the opportunity for Mill Creek Township residents and taxpayers to ask questions regarding any item listed on the agenda for the committee meetings. Same protocols apply to all individuals who wish to address the board. If you're asking a question, please indicate which agenda item you're asking about. The committee chairperson review this at the appropriate time during their committee meetings. Do not have any questions, but simply wish to make comments or a statement, we invite you to attend and participate in the regularly scheduled school board meetings, held on a fourth Monday of each month, or to participate in the Committee of the Whole Meeting, that sometimes occurs after completion of the three committee meetings. Tonight, we do have a Committee of the Whole Meeting scheduled, which includes the opportunity for the Mill Creek Township residents and taxpayers to make comments regarding the matters related to the programs, services, and operations of the Mill Creek Township School District. If you'd like to make comments this evening, please complete the visitor request to speak form located in the back of the boardroom. Details can be found on our website with each of the meeting announcements. Again, the committee meetings tonight give the public the opportunity to ask questions about the items on the committees and meetings' agenda. Thank you for your cooperation, and we appreciate your input and your feedback. First committee meeting this evening is Instruction and Student Services, Mrs. Winchell.
Thank you. Item 1.01, roll call, please, Mrs. O'Connor.
Ms. Winchell?
Here.
Ms. Newsom?
Here.
Ms. Philbeck is absent.
1.02, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
2.01, I'd like to make a motion to approve the committee meeting minutes from May 13th. You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
This evening, there are seventeen action items, starting with 3.01, Mill Creek Township School District Comprehensive Plan for '24 through '27. Dr. Kavanaugh?
Okay, so the comprehensive plan for the next three years has been posted to the website since the end of last month, and it will stay posted to the website, so you can review. I think it's about forty pages long. This is just a summary and overview of how we came up with the plan itself. So if you look at what we had to focus on, we first sat down to talk about, and the first step was what it says up there. "Honor the past, acknowledge the present, design the future." We had a committee of fifty-four committee members. This was board members, central office personnel, building administrators, teachers, parents, students, and community members from various organizations. So, we met four times. As you can see, we kind of got together, we thought this would be enough, and it was pushing it to get through all of this in those four meetings, but for three hours at a time at MIHS on the dates that are listed up there. Our objectives, and our first objective, we kind of highlighted a few board meetings ago when Chrisa and Mary Gibson did their presentation about the portrait of a graduate. That was step one. That took about the first couple of meetings to get through the portrait of a graduate, because that kind of becomes the defining part of what we're going to do moving forward. Then, from there, we started to build the plan, and by doing that, you look at your strengths, your weaknesses, and then what are some of the goals that you need to set moving forward. So we talked about four keys to success, and this is what the committee came up with. When we looked at all the stuff, at the end of each meeting, people go out and do a Google survey for what was talked about and share the information, then we would sit down and kind of synthesize it all. And the four points that kept coming up were themes were academic excellence, community engagement, mental health and wellness, and technology and innovation. So that became the focal point of building the actual comprehensive plan. So then, what the question is, like, how do we get the kids there? And our decision was very easily right away, and that's the next slide, is the portrait of a graduate being the center. So everything runs back or runs away from the portrait of a graduate, and that's what's going to be our focal point over the next however many years as we make adjustments. And then those four areas I mentioned previously are what we're trying to do with this particular plan. So the activity was basically, now that we got through the portrait of a graduate piece, what is our data telling us? We know as a district, we look at our data all the time, we need an input from other stakeholder groups. So we sat down and we had conversations with those groups of what the information was. So looking at the data, what does the data tells us we're good at? Where might we need to grow a little bit more? What is some evidence that might be missing? But what is kind of our story as a district? So they reviewed the data for those four areas, which is what I already mentioned. And when you're doing that, so we talked about academic excellence. Those are the data points they were looking at. They looked at PSSA scores, our Keystone scores, our AP scores, the Future Ready Index, which gives you both achievement and growth and career readiness information, and then our growth data with PVAS. So for academic excellence, we had probably about twenty-something pages worth of data for each of the groups to sit down, and all of the groups had different members of the stakeholder groups in them. So it was kind of very well-balanced groups to look at the data. For community engagement, thanks to Leanna, she came in and she talked about, what is our direct community engagement? What is our indirect? And then what are some community educational partnerships we have, and how could we grow those? So again, she presented, the group sat down, they talked about strengths and weaknesses. For mental health and wellness, we looked at our pays data. We looked at counseling caseloads, we looked at our counselor visits, how many times are the kids going to the counselors these days? Our community supports and contracts, and where we could grow, and then our crisis data. So every group had a chance to review all this information. Some of it, I mean, if you look at some of the pays data, it points out some glaring problems. Okay, there we go. Technology and innovation, so we looked at, we had Mr. Theme come in. He presented to the group, talked about device reports, Google Classroom, active classes, our printing stats, which, as we all joked around, were a little bit higher than we'd like to see them, and then a long-range planning document where we thought we needed to go as a district. So from there, they looked at the mission and vision statement, and then they looked at establishing some of the goals, and what is the way to get to those goals over the next three years? So, for goal number one, we looked at, MPSD will implement strategies to ensure student growth and student agency from year to year. And that was, again, this was established by the committee, this wasn't a goal that we developed, and we said, this is what we want to do. The committee came up with this. So from there, we looked at, and this is cut and paste right out of the document itself, so it talks about, what is the goal? Vertical alignment, looking at our assessments, and then looking K to 12, so we can align things vertically. It talks about what we want to do to year one, year two, and year three. And we did this for each of the four areas. So the next area was, goal two, develop partnerships with community organizations to support student growth. Looking at the experiences that we currently offer, what could we do to offer more? Looking at the internships we offer, how could we grow our internship program? Looking at better field trips for our students, better opportunities, job opportunities and job fairs, speakers and dual enrollment. We have a lot of this going on, but sometimes it's going on not necessarily in alignment with one another. So what can we do to bring it all together and almost have like a central repository of this information as a district? And then from there, we set up, use a database of vetted speakers, organizations and services to identify potential partnerships with community to support student growth. Some of the organizations that were there, working with us, Erie Insurance was there, Wegmans was there, Matrix Two and I was there. So we had a lot of different groups there, sharing their experiences of what they see of students coming in, not just our students, but students in general, but many of them do work with our students. The third one dealt with mental health and wellness. MPSD is aware of the importance of mental health. We pledge to increase awareness of mental health data, existing supports, and best STL practices for students and growth. So that kind of came about as knowing that we need to get the kids in the right frame of mind to learn, and that we do have some kids who are still struggling currently, so what can we do to help them get there? And then from there, we'll increase awareness and improve access to mental health support services for all of our students. And again, it just targeted out over a three-year period. And the last one is MPSD is committed to improving technological efficiency and usage to support student growth, so the effective use of technology, what's it going to look like? And our focus on there comes on digital citizenship and AI, which will be something we'll be talking about later on this evening, and one of the new policies that PSBA is putting forward in relation to AI. So that is an overview of the process itself and how we got to it. The entire plan, like I said, is about forty pages, it is in detail on the website. If anybody has any questions, let me know. If you have any questions now, I can answer them. But if anybody, the community is listening, you have questions, please feel free to reach out. But again, I want to thank the committee, because to put that many people in a room, that many nights, to come up with this was a very good task and very helpful, but it definitely was a task. Any thoughts? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kavanaugh.
Thank you.
3.02 is the Montessori Regional Charter School re-charter?
Yes. So, the Montessori Regional Charter Schools charter goes for five years, and it expires this summer. So this past October, we started in conjunction with Erie's Public Schools and the Knox Law Firm, the process of what that charter examination looks like. Montessori made application to us for them to continue that. And at the end of kind of a long process, we looked at their academic operations. Knox took a look at their operational capacity, things like clearances, et cetera. We have arrived at the document that is there in the public content, which is the charter. It's pretty standard, it goes for another five years. It will be approved at the end of the month board meeting, which is when it would take effect, because Erie's Public Schools will have approved this on June 12th. So the charter would actually be dated for June 24th, our end-of-month meeting. And it gives them, you certainly can read the provisions there, they're allowed to operate the charter school at their present address. They have an enrollment cap of six hundred and fifty students, and certainly the other provisions of the charter are in effect. Are there any questions about that at all?
Okay, 3.03 is the '24-'25 field trip calendar.
And this is the lengthy document that all of our buildings have submitted their typical annual field trips for each one of those buildings on.
Thirty-one pages of exciting reading.
Yes, all good learning experiences for students.
The next several are professional development or conference requests.
Yeah, and we wanted to bring these to you early. These are some of our core professional development experiences for teachers, but certainly we wanted to get them in to you early enough, so that if you should approve them, then we can effectively plan over the summer. The first is the Social Studies Department, to travel on the October in-service day to the Cleveland Art Museum to gain certainly some instructional capacity there. 3.05 is for the National Counselors of Teachers of English Annual Convention, that would take place in November, and the intention is to send five teachers and the supervisor of the ELA and Social Studies curriculum to that conference in Boston. We don't have an exact cost estimate because of the variation in flights between now and then, but it would be somewhere between ten and twelve thousand dollars for that conference. 3.06 is a conference actually at the same time and the same place. It's in Boston, it's also in November, and this is for the National Council of Social Studies. This would be to send the Social Studies Department chairs from grade six through eight, nine through ten, and eleven and twelve. And that cost would be just over seven thousand dollars for them. 3.07 is the Pennsylvania Council of the Teachers of English and Language Arts for their annual convention. This is in Cranberry Township, and this would be in October. The cost is about thirty-five hundred dollars, and this would be to send five teachers, English teachers, from the different grade bands, so one from K-2, one from 3-5, one from six through eight, one from nine, ten, and one for eleven and twelve. The next is the Science Conference, National Conference on Science Education, the implementation of the STEEL standards. As you know, in Pennsylvania, the new science standards this year makes us excited to send teachers here. This is in November as well, and this is in New Orleans, Louisiana. We would send two teachers from the elementary, two teachers from the middle school, and two teachers from the high school to attend this conference. It would be about fourteen thousand, six hundred dollars, again, flight estimates included there.
I did have one question on the Cleveland one for the social studies teacher. I don't see any transportation costs.
It would take district vans, so we don't typically itemize a cost there. It's just simply our own vans, the cost of fuel.
Okay.
3.09 is a speaking engagement contract.
As Dr. Kavanaugh alluded to, in the comprehensive plan, artificial intelligence is a force that cannot be stopped. The industry leaders estimate within the next three to five years, the face of almost every human experience will change. That includes economy, it includes healthcare, it certainly includes education. So Mill Creek Township School District wants to be a leader and wants to be at the fore of artificial intelligence. So one of the most recommended speakers in the state, recommended by a number of different organizations, including Pennsylvania School Boards Association, is A.J. Giuliani. Members of our Curriculum Department and IT Department had the opportunity to see him and some of his presentations earlier this year. He's outstanding, so what we'd like to do is bring him in to speak to our administrators at the Summer Leadership Academy for half a day in August, and then bring him in to in-service our teachers directly for half a day in November on a teacher in-service, and half a day in February on a teacher in-service. So this contract is for all three of those engagements. What makes him valuable is the fact that he gets directly to the point of, teachers, these are some of the most impactful resources in artificial intelligence you can use with your students in class tomorrow for good educational benefits.
Item 3.10 are the '24-'25 fall athletic schedules. There are seventeen schedules attached to that. Girls tennis, girls varsity soccer, girls JV soccer, boys soccer, boys JV soccer, Westlake football, Walnut Creek football, J.S. Wilson football, JV ninth-grade football, varsity football, JV football, cross-country, Westlake girls basketball, Walnut Creek girls basketball, J.S. Wilson girls basketball, girls volleyball, and girls JV volleyball. 3.12 is the '24-'25 Edmund Thomas Alternative Education. I skipped 3.11, sorry. 3.11, the '24-'25 foreign exchange students.
And these are two foreign exchange students up for your approval and consideration. They have already moved through the full registration process for the district, which includes all of the required documentation.
Thank you. 3.12, the '24-'25 Edmund Thomas Alternative Education.
This is an annual contract we have with IU5. Edmund L. Thomas has a detention facility for incarcerated youth. And we contract with IU5 to provide the educational component for students who are living there. So we pay the 188, 528 upfront, and then districts are responsible for the students that they send, including us. So everybody pays their fair share at the end of the year, so we pay it upfront, and then we get reimbursed on the back end.
3.13 is the Alternative Education Program Contract with Persia's House.
This program is for students in Mill Creek Township School District who are assigned a disciplinary placement and alternative education for disruptive youth. The annual agreement is for two hundred and two thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine dollars. It's for one year, providing that support and service for up to twelve students at a time.
3.14 are the IU5 Special Ed Programs.
So IU5 projects what it's going to cost us for the supports and services that we request on an annual basis, and inevitably, we will use most of these services, some of them a little bit more, some a little bit less. And once again, this is trued up at the end of the school year, based upon how much we actually use. The projection right now is one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars for programs and services for our students.
3.15 is the '24-'25 IU5 Institutional Programs at Mill Creek Community Hospital.
So as the boards are aware, the Mill Creek Community Hospital operates residential treatment facility, that's a ninety-day program for students who are in medical need of that support. IU5 provides a classroom, a teacher, and a support staff to provide the educational component at the hospital, and we, once again, are reimbursed this dollar amount by the districts that send students there, and we're responsible for paying for any students from our school district who are at the PRTF.
3.16 is the '24-'25 Bayotta Nursing Services Agreement.
And this is a contract the board's familiar with. We put this in place annually in case we would need additional services beyond what we have at our school district. Bayotta offers us an hourly rate of fifty dollars an hour for RN or LPN services as needed and at our request. This past school year, we didn't use any of this, but it is available to us if we get in a pinch.
3.17 is the Barbara National Institute Service Agreement.
Oh, this is for an extended school year service for a student to attend the Barbara National Extended School Year Program.
Okay, the final item is 3.18, the '24-'25 COUTH Application MOU.
So the board will remember last month, Dr. Cork did a presentation on COUTH, and we actually have our COUTH representatives here who do an information item following the action items. This is a memorandum of understanding that between COUTH and the Mill Creek Township School District on the application and rollout of using the COUTH app at our district. Mr. Senate's reviewed this and has added some language to that agreement.
I'd like to make a motion to move items 3.01 through 3.18 forward to the meeting at the end of the month. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion about any of those eighteen items?
Yes, Ms. Winchell, I do have one question. I know that some of these conferences are estimates, but Ms. Burnak, I'd ask you to go back and look at the Boston NCTE Conference. You have listed hotel, two hundred and fifty dollars for four nights. Pretty sure that's not a Boston rate. Pretty sure that's not a Boston rate. You also didn't list an estimate for a flight. It's, and there's no cumulative total like all the rest, and that be updated prior to board meeting.
Certainly. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion about those 18 items? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, finally, we have four information items this evening. Item 4.01 is the COOTH presentation.
So I'd like to welcome Rachel Foote and Katie Rudek, who are here from COOTH to, as a follow-up to the presentation that Dr. Quirk did last month on COOTH. And so they're going to present about the program in a little bit more detail and here to answer questions that the board or community might have about the program.
Thank you. My name is Rachel, and this is Katie. So we're here to talk a little bit more about COOTH. I'm sure Kim did a great job covering it, but in case you have any further questions. Okay, so on this first slide here, you'll see a couple statistics. I'm sure none of these statistics will come as a shock to any of you, as you're all educators working with students, and we know that you care about your students' mental health. Mental health is just as important as physical health, and we are trying to increase accessibility for students to gain access to mental health care. All right, so what is COOTH? So COOTH is an online mental health support platform for the youth in Pennsylvania. We are a safe, no-cost, confidential service. We focus on connecting with families and supporting families who can access COOTH. So if Mill Creek chooses to partner with us, all of your students that you want to have access to the platform will have access to it. We are currently live, 17 districts in PA, serving almost 100,000 students. So just to give you a general idea of some of the topics that our students look at on the regular. So the most commonly accessed topic is anxiety and stress, followed by sleep difficulties and depression. So one of the most common questions we get is who is able to use it? So the platform is available to students ages 11 through 18. You do not have to give permission to all those students, but that who is who is able to use it. So the students aged 11 to 12, they would need parental consent to sign up and use the chat-based counseling feature. Students aged 13, they're able to sign up on their own, but they do need that parental consent for the chat-based counseling. And students ages 14 and up do not need parental consent to use the platform. And that is based on the Pennsylvania state laws where students or children, youth age 14 and up, are able to seek mental health services on their own. Okay, so this slide here just gives a little bit more detail about the different supports that we offer. So our subclinical model focuses on early intervention and prevention. So we have three different supports, tiered supports. So the first one is the self-directed resources. This is our most common used tier. So when students get on the platform, they have the option to kind of utilize different services and resources that we provide on their own. So we have a goal-setting option where they can go in and set different goals for themselves. We also have journaling. There's an option to just open journal, and we also have journal prompts available. The next step up would be our Tier Two supports, and that's our community support. So this is where they have the option to engage with other community members, other students that are using the platform, see what other kids are talking about. So we have activities. These are little mini-activities. We have, I believe, 30 on our platform right now, so the students can do these on their own. They could do them with friends, you can do them with your family. This can also be done in a classroom setting if you choose. We have discussion boards where the students can get on, and they can interact with one another. They can get on and post about something they might be struggling with, an issue they might be having. And other students are able to get on and read about it and comment, you know, if they're also struggling with the same thing. And it's called a magazine on here because we're based out of the UK, but this is our articles. So these are articles that are, can be written by both students and our mental health professionals on the backend. And the students can get on, and they can find an article on pretty much anything they can think of. They can go on and they can just scroll, or there is a way to search for a specific topic they might be looking for. And our Tier Three supports is that professional support level. So the students do have access to talking with mental health professionals. So we have live chat, and we also have messaging. So the live chat is exactly what it sounds like. You're able to get on and you're able to message back and forth with a mental health professional. These are scheduled chats, and any student can schedule those if they choose. And there's also the messaging feature, so that works a little more like email. So if you get on, you have, you know, maybe you're just stressed about an exam, and you just want to vent to somebody. You can get on and send that message, and someone will respond to you within 24 hours. Usually, it's less than 24 hours, but it's never any more than 24 hours. All right, so I'm going to let Katie talk a little bit more about that Tier Two community option.
Yeah, so the services that we provide at COOTH are very straightforward. We believe that by providing education, coping skills, an ability to access your community of support, and mental health professionals for that higher level of need, we can improve the mental health and well-being of many youth. So the Tier Two Community Support is where we get a lot of questions. So we wanted to make it very clear of how that all works. Everything is pre-moderated, so that means any post is reviewed by human eyes before it ever makes its way to the message board. There's no way for two users to ever connect with each other. So let's say a youth wants to post something, a moderator will look at it and make sure that it's safe, helpful, and anonymous prior to it ever being posted. That goes for initial posts, and that goes for responses to posts. And that's how we create a safe environment for youth to communicate. Again, very, very important to hit the point home, there is absolutely no way on our platform for two users to connect to each other ever. Yeah, no direct messaging. It's not possible on the app. Do you want to click me? So for that Tier Three level of support, we just have this slide to talk a little bit about who is on there. So these are all going to be, all counseling is done by licensed mental health professionals licensed in the state of Pennsylvania. So these are people who have received their license independently. They've been vetted by an ethics board by the state. Anything to add to that before we move on to the next slide?
So as I had mentioned, as I had mentioned before with the asynchronous messaging that works kind of like email, so the average response time for all of our, all 17 of our schools was 19.5 hours was the average time it took them to get a response for that. And the live chats, so all of our services, the Tier Three services are available after school hours. And we find that works best because that's when students no longer have the support of what you guys provide while they're in school. So anything that will happen after 3:00 PM, and those scheduled sessions where you can message back and forth with the counselor happen between 6:00 and 10:00 PM. So you can schedule them anytime in those hours. So the last thing that I want to talk about here is just safety again. So safety is at the core of everything that we do. So Katie touched a little bit on that moderation. So everything that we have is pre-approved, it's moderated before it gets posted. And that includes even the students' user's names. So when I, when I come into the school, I do what I call a COOTH day, which is just explain to the students that are going to have access to the platform, what it is, show them what's on there, show them how to register if they're interested. So when a student registers, they have to come up with a username, and we stress to them that their username also has to be anonymous. There can't be anything in it that would give the indication that it belongs to them. So none of those demographic, personal identifying information, anything like that. She touched a little on our staffing. So all of our staffing is licensed. They do encourage your students, so anytime you, if you hear of your student or, you know, another student scheduling that session or sending a message, one of those asynchronous messages, all our counselors do encourage the students to reach out to someone that they trust, whether that be a teacher, a family member, anyone like that. We want them to feel like there is someone that they can go to outside of the COOTH services as well. So anytime they engage with us, we let them know, hey, if you have someone that you trust, let them know that you're, you know, talking to us about this. And our escalation plan, just to touch a little bit on that. So the way it works for us is when the students engage in those chats and those emails, if there is any sort of risk identified, we create an escalation plan with the school, and we follow that. So a lot of our schools choose to put the safe-to-say in that escalation pathway. And that just kind of creates a pathway, I guess, to who we would contact if a risk is identified. So a lot of the times, that would be the school psychologist, school counselor, whatever your path to identifying that risk is, we would follow what your school district chooses to do. All right, and that is all for the presentation. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you so much for the presentation. Can you give me an idea of the logistics of how this would roll out? You mentioned that you would be in the school and you would talk with the students. So you would go into each of the three middle schools and the two high schools?
So whatever age groups you guys would choose to partner with, that's where I would go do a presentation at. So if you wanted to do it from the ages 14 to 18, whatever grades would fall in there. If you only wanted to do it to 11th and 12th grade, then I would just go present to 11th and 12th grade. So whatever student ages that you're wanting to kind of partner with, that's who I would go present to.
Our initial plan was to roll this out at the high school, nine to 12.
Nine to 12. So you would go in, it would be a one-time visit where you would explain what was going on and all of that. And then what would the next step be for students?
Yeah, so if it works best for this high school, we can do a one-time presentation where all the grades are in there. We could do it by individual grade, whatever works best for the school. And then kind of where we go from that. So after that initial presentation where I talk about what COOTH is and how to register, we would look for an opportunity probably in the second half of the year, just to come up and do what we call a workshop. And that workshop would, we would want to try to base it on whatever topic your students are looking at most. So if the majority of the students that registered are looking at, you know, exam stress, we would want to come up and do a workshop on how can you deal with exam stress? And so these workshops really just are meant to kind of get the word out that they do have access to this service, but also allow them to gain kind of coping skills related to whatever issues that they're kind of searching and struggling with the most.
So you had said, I believe, anyone under the age of 14, you know, if they wanted to participate in the Tier Three, needed to have parental consent. How does that happen?
Yes, correct. So ages 11, 12, and 13, so 11 and 12, when they get on the platform, they're asked to put in their name and date of birth. And the date of birth, if it shows that they're 11 or 12, will trigger the next step, which will ask them to put in their parents' email. So then the parents will get an email, and within that email, it just explains what COOTH is, why their students are asking to use it. And then they have to click on it, go into the permission form. And the permission form includes, like, there's things in there to make sure that the parents are putting in. So it asks for the parents to identify who they are. You can either put in, I think, a driver's license number, maybe a social security number, things that hopefully your students wouldn't know. And then ages 13, they have that just for the chat feature. So the same thing will happen, it'll trigger a thing to send their parents an email, and their parents will have to go in and give them permission to use it, which is why, like, when I do the COOTH day, if I'm presenting to even the students over 14, who don't have to ask, I let them know, like, make sure you tell your parents you're signing up for this, explain to them what it is, you know, go home and log on to it, show them what's in there. I think it helps a lot, just like if your parents get an email, they're like, what is this? It gives them a little bit of heads up.
And this is a totally optional, basically after-school type of resource that's available for students if they want it?
Yes, absolutely, yep. When I come in and do the COOTH day, I just show them how to register. There's no pressure to register on the spot. They can do it later, they can do it in a couple weeks if something comes up that they're like, hey, I know I have access to this platform, I'd like to see what's on there now.
Is it web-based only, or is there a physical app that goes on to the phone?
So right now, it is only web-based. We are in the process of getting it into an app. We're hoping to have that by 2025. Okay, that's what I thought.
So what feedback do you provide to the district? I have, you know, 1,500 students signed up, and we had, we provided X services. Do you give that feedback to the district, or does somebody have an admin-type account?
Yeah, yep. So what I do with whoever chooses, I know, like, my main point of contact's been Ed so far, but whoever else would want to be on the kind of COOTH advocate team for Mill Creek Township, what I do is we have a check-in meeting. So it would be every three or four months, depending on whatever works for you. And so like, the mid-year meeting would be the first half of the year, what kind of data is showing for your school district? So I run through all that, explain it to you, see if there's anything you'd like to make as far as changes and things like that. And we also do that at the end of the year as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just was Googling a little bit of information on COOTH. And one thing that comes up, when you have this COOTH day, do you provide prizes, cake, or anything like that? Because one of the Pennsylvania legislatures is asking about this and saying that you provide incentives to the students to sign up. Do you do that?
I do not. I do have stickers and pens that they're able to take if they choose, but we do not provide any, like, food or beverages or anything like that.
So you've got some swag for them, but not food?
Correct, yeah. And I just have it out on the table along with, like, a business card with my name on it. So if they want to grab it on their way out or on their way in, they're able to do that.
Looking for some cake to go with your pretzels?
Yeah, and my potato chips. You could get me in a minute with cake, as long as it's got whipped cream frosting. I'd be signed up till the cows come home, but that's me. Says cookies and candy, so okay, if you don't do cookies and candy, then that's cool. Not for me, but, all right, thank you.
Quick question, you had 17 districts sign up, 100,000, so what's the participation rate? Is it 10%, 5%? You know, basically, of the students that take advantage of this opportunity?
Yeah, so it's, I mean, you might have a better idea, but it's hard for me to give a number, just because all of our districts are a different size.
Yeah.
So, like, the school that I would have the most information on is Bradford School, because that's where I'm from. They have a 53% signup rate.
53%.
So the majority of their students are using it, and the majority of those students fall within 15 to 16 age group.
Any other questions? Thank you, Rachel and Katie.
Thank you.
That was very informative. Thank you. 4.02 in information items is the Summer Professional Development Plan.
I'm excited to share our summer PD plan with you this evening. This year, we're offering a variety of PD opportunities throughout the summer. The bulk of the opportunities will be in July and August. This is different than what we have done the past three years. In the past, we've done three intensive days, but this year, we're opting for earlier opportunities spanning over a six-week time period. Most sessions will be held in person at Grand View, with the exception of a few virtual sessions. All sessions will be eligible for Act 48, and those that qualify under Title IV will be eligible for compensation as well. In order to find the available summer sessions, we have created a summer PD website. The teachers were emailed the flyer that was on the previous slide, which gave them direct access to the site. They can find the site also by going to the staff portal and accessing it on the Staff in Service and Professional Development page. The site explains that it is where all the summer PD will be housed, and that it will be updated continuously to reflect any additions or changes to the schedule. There's a frequently asked questions section, followed by the schedule. The schedule is shown through an embedded Google Calendar, and it can be viewed in agenda view, or by week, or by month. Regardless of the view that the user chooses, you can click on a session to find out more information, such as the description of the session, who's offering the session, and if it's a Title IV opportunity. We have embedded signup links, but preregistering is not required. It does help the presenters estimate the number of attendees. And by signing up, you also get, like, a reminder through email, which is nice for the participants. We have a variety of sessions, and we look forward to providing these this summer.
We have a variety of sessions and we look forward to providing these this summer. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Four point zero three, grading procedure change.
Yes, so the high school has brought to our attention, kind of consistently over the school year, some difficulties with the current grading procedure. And namely, that is, quite frankly, students' refusal to do assignments or assessments. And that typically looks something like, towards the end of a course, you know, a student is looking at the final exam and they're sort of calculating out their grade. And with the way that our grading procedure works, you know, we have a lower limit on the grade that we can give the students, fifty percent. And so a student, some students then saying, okay, if I don't take this final exam, well, I still have to get the low grade. I still get the bottom, which is fifty percent. And I could still pass the course, or I could still get this end grade of a B or something like that. Those of you who attended the data step-back meetings, you heard and saw some of the data that the high school presented around this. It's kind of a growing problem, unfortunately, as word spreads among students when newest escape route is discovered. So the high school team, nine through twelve, took a hard look at this in the springtime. They put together some, certainly good data, but they put together good suggestions for a procedural change. And the procedural change, very simply, now has sort of three anecdotes to that. A student can receive below the minimum grade cap. In other words, a student can receive below a fifty percent if one of the three attributes is in play. Number one, they simply refuse to do the assignment. And number two, they refuse to demonstrate effort in completing the assignment. Number three, they refuse to participate in the retake policy. Retake policy is that for a summative assessment, a student has the opportunity to retake it two times to get a better grade. They simply need to request that of the teacher, and they're allowed to do that. The first point, of course, a student refusing to do the assignment is obvious. The third point, refusing to participate in a retake policy is also obvious. The second point, the administration is aware that we say a student refuses to demonstrate effort and completing an assignment might obviously lend itself to some gray area. What we envision is a student turning in a fifty-point test with three questions completed and says, okay, I'm done. I don't want to do this anymore. That's what it looks like to us. If a student and a teacher would have a disagreement about what that looks like, then certainly the student will appeal to the principal, and the principal will do what they would do normally in situations like this, which is, of course, do the fact-finding and then make a determination as to what the next steps would be. But that would be the only change in the procedure as it exists now.
Very good. Thank you. And finally, four point zero four is the Broadway Teachers Workshop Date Change.
Yeah, very simply, one of the teachers couldn't make it at the dates that were approved before, so they just had to move. Same conference, same attendees, just different dates.
Thank you. Item five point zero one is Instruction and Student Services Questions from the Public. Are there any questions from the public this evening? Hearing none. Six point zero one, Instruction and Student Services Adjournment. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Next committee meeting is Personnel Policy Committee. Mr. Dean?
Thank you, President. Want you item one point zero one, roll call. Ms. Connor, can you take the roll, please?
Mr. Dean?
Here.
Mr. Kobelka?
Sure.
And Mr. Brink is absent tonight.
Thank you. Item one point zero two, Approval of the Agenda. Like to make a motion that we approve the agenda. Can I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, we have twelve items for action this evening. Take these in a couple of different blocks. Three point zero one, Policy Eight One Five Point One, Use of Generative Artificial Intelligence in Education, First Reading. This is what Dr. Kavanaugh alluded to earlier, just laying out the responsibilities and the responsible use of artificial intelligence in the classroom. And three point zero two, Memorandum of Understanding Mill Creek Township Police Department. This is our agreement with Mill Creek Police. And three point zero three, Memorandum of Understanding MEA Early Retirement. I'd like to make a motion that we move three point zero one to three point zero three to the Board meeting at the end of the month. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I do have a couple of questions about the generative AI. The policy is kind of vague. Says that, you know, we're going to allow tools. We're going to disseminate them. What tools? Are we disseminating them?
So that would be collaborative effort between the Curriculum Department, the IT Department, building principles. So as part of the summer exploration of the curriculum department's work is to kind of pig down the best tools. And when we say the best tools, those exist in two realms. The tools that are most impactful for education, yes. But number two, and maybe even more importantly, the tools that we have control of. In other words, a paid enterprise subscription, organizational subscription, to an artificial intelligence tool, at least one. Why? Because that's a closed-loop system. In other words, if for some reason personally identifiable information were to be put in there, a student puts something about themselves in there, that does not go to the public. That's a recommendation from all the industry leaders, so it's something that we're acutely aware of. So we don't have a curated list yet. That's part of the project over the summer. Multi-departmental eyes on that to make sure it suits our purposes, number one, from a safety standpoint, but then two, from an educational standpoint.
Do we have any other? And this is probably more towards our IT director. You talked about personal identification information, but there's an ownership. Are we going to let the company that we select utilize our information to help build their database? Or how are we going to limit? Or how are we going to select those tools? Because there are definitely different levels of what you can keep them from using that are only for internal. And I know this policy is more targeted at students, but we also need one, it's kind of for staff. But what are we going to tier one, two, and three level data from a district that can be put into AI versus not what put into AI? I appreciate this, but I think that you're early on this. You don't have enough of this in policy yet to really bring forward.
If I may, AI right now is the Wild West. It is, it is the Wild West. It is, there are a plethora of very free tools that are available. And all these companies are creating these free tools in the hopes that a bigger company will come along and buy them out. We will get to a point in time where AI is a charged, is a charged thing. But right now, all these companies want to get their product out into people's hands. Trying to police AI is a conversation, like Mr. Mark said, that we went through training at the IU to sit through and try to figure out how to stop something that is the unstoppable force. This policy, I think, is a starting point. It is definitely not the be-all and end-all. This came from PDE, if I'm not mistaken. I haven't really had a chance to really look completely at it.
It came from PSBA, this policy. I actually attended an hour-long conference with PSBA about this and their attorney stressing the need for the policy. They put the policy forth. We checked off the boxes that would fit our best needs at this point, but we did not create the policy from the beginning.
No, and we understand that it is vague. We understand that it is not a be-all and end-all. We understand that there's a lot of work to do on this. It is just, like I said, trying to capture everything that's almost impossible to capture.
So how does our current contractual agreements with our, I know we use Microsoft for a lot of things, have we started talking to them about how institutional data can be used with their AI and what type of levels of support or institutional security would come through that? Because, as you said, it is the Wild West, but we already have IT licensing in place, and have we started leveraging that? Because that is probably the first point of where we're going to start this conversation. Because I'm worried less about how the students are going to manipulate this to turn in their projects, because they're going to. They're going to be faster at it than you can probably police it. I'm more worried about what are our team going to do with our institutional data to do their jobs? And how does that get out? And how do we protect that?
We've been working on putting together documentation to give out to our vendors to fill out for acceptable use for data that we use. And those conversations with Microsoft, for example, are something that's definitely coming down the pike and that we've already started those discussions through the IU with the IU's help. And part of the intention, too, certainly with the team, is to put together guardrails. In other words, you know, written parameters on the use of AI for our teachers, staff, and students as well. For example, we are not intending on using artificial intelligence to effectively identify our geographical boundaries. You know, in other words, we put all of our student database in here and AI, you tell us what kids can go to what grade levels at what schools. It saves us a lot of time and energy, but that's far too much personally identifiable information that we would put in. So part of the team's creation will be guide rails to say, teachers, this is what we have. These are the resources identified, and this is what we want you to use it for. In other words, educational experiences in the classroom. So we're not looking at sort of, you know, institutional leveraging yet to make our operations easier. We might get there at some point. Again, obviously, that's what the economy and the business sector is doing. But right now, it's very strictly focused on educational tools in the classroom.
Can you explain why PSBA, why do they want us to do this now when it is so generic? And it really is basically saying, if it's important to approve it now without really saying what we're doing, other than whatever we approve is what we're doing and we're only allowing what's approved to be done. Why do we need to do it now?
Well, the, I think there are two major drivers. Number one, because school districts have been asking for it. And that gets to the second point, though, which is because people are already using it. You know, students, teachers are already using it. So, for example, teachers have been worried about the, you know, sort of the, I forget what the term is, but the academic implications here, right? In other words, how can I tell if a student's going to plagiarize my assignment? It's not really plagiarized, but it's certainly not their work. And so, of course, in school districts, trying to make their own policies to block those, which inevitably are ineffective because there's new tools, as Mr. Linder said, right? The students discover new tools every single day. They discover how to use them better than we could ever hope to stop them. So school districts have been asking for that. And I think PSBA's attempt was to call everything that we know so far into a single place. They had a number of solicitor firms they worked with to say things in the policy that I think are helpful first steps. For example, teachers are responsible for telling students ahead of time what extent AI can be used in their class. Teachers can use AI detection tools to determine if a student plagiarized their work, but that can't be the sole determinant, because AI detection tools at this point are unreliable. So it can be a piece of a determinant. So in other words, it is very broad. It is very generic. But we do think it takes at least a couple helpful first steps into, at least into culling some of this into something that makes sense.
Will teachers determine different policies for different classes? Or will there be a district-wide policy?
The guardrails would be such that we don't want to choke off teachers, you know, in their ability to use resources as they always have, right? With any website that they find, et cetera. We have a number of teachers right now who are using it very well in classes. For example, students to help them develop writing prompts for their own writing. And then, of course, they build a writing off suggestions from, you know, ChatGPT. So it would be a balance, right? It would be the guardrails more intending, again, on the safety aspect, making sure that the personally identifiable information is controlled. But certainly then teachers still have that liberty, the latitude to use a resource as effectively as they can.
Thank you.
So we have a meeting in a couple of weeks, but John, maybe at the superintendent's meeting. Is the IU involved with the PDE and the different school districts? Do you know if they're working on something, so it's somewhat consistent in?
I do not know that I can look into that. I can tell you at this meeting, there were two hundred and eighty-five people on the webinar that I was on across the state. So yes, everybody's having this conversation.
Yeah.
Where the IU is currently, I don't know. I'll reach out to Brad, because our meeting this month is canceled.
Yeah, I have a meeting in two weeks. I'll make sure I ask that question at that meeting as well.
And Yvonne T. did share that they are working on putting together professional development opportunities for our teachers with artificial intelligence.
I guess what I really would prefer to see, because this sounds like this policy is strictly what a teacher can do within the classroom and what a student can do in the classroom using AI. And it's vague at this point, and you'll eventually get to some guardrails. Where is the policy that's coming about? How is our data being used internally by our staff? Because that is the one that the guide rails need established sooner rather than later. I'm looking at Patrick over there, because I know he's pretty conservative probably on this. I would say you need to lock it down first with institutional data and then slowly unlock it once you feel comfortable, not leave it vague. Let anyone do what they want at this point. Because while you say do it ethically, let's just be realistic. Your ethics, my ethics, may be very different. I think we're ethical people.
I'm not sure we would put that detail into a policy itself. That would probably be procedural as opposed to a policy. Because that procedure would change over time. And I think the policy is generic purposely, as drafted. Does have the necessary legal language in it under authority, identifying all the statutes that are applicable. So just food for thought. The more detail you put in, the more restrictive it is. And then how often you have to change it if you change that detail. Policies are supposed to be broad-based. And that then allows the administration to establish procedures for which they can operate under them. I vote for that.
So Mike, are you concerned with, let's say, a teacher takes thirty grades from a semester, dumps it into chat and says, give me the final grades for this, and it has all their names in it, as an example? Something like that? Or, I mean, there's probably other examples.
There's tons of different things. I'm just concerned, we basically made it so generic that says, we'll use AI tools. What tools? When are we going to teach them what those tools are? What grade do we start teaching them what those tools are? Who's going to tell them what the ethical and non-ethical use of AI is?
Yeah, clearly, we have to add some meat.
I mean, this, if it's a nice legal document, but it's very little purpose. That's my point of view.
That's the goal of it.
What you're describing is curriculum as opposed to policy. You know, a policy is more general. What we're doing at what particular grade is more of a curriculum concern rather than a policy concern.
And one of the reasons we're bringing in AJ Juland to speak to administrators and our teachers, and the teachers again, is to help us establish some of this, and what is the effective and best use of the policy. So we're hoping he can give us a little more guidance. This is just an initial starting point that was supported by PSBA, and that's why we brought it forward.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of moving this forward to the board meeting at the end of the month, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And then three point zero four, Memorandum of Understanding MEA Supplements. Like to make a motion that we move this forward to the committee, the whole, this evening. Can I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You, Mr. Kobelka. Item three point zero five, June tenth, twenty twenty-four Personnel Committee Report. Asbury, we have a recommendation for a janitor, part-time. We have a recommendation for a pre-K teacher, temporary professional contract. O Valley, we have a special education assistant, recommendation for a special education assistant, emotional support. We've changed the status from Title I Educational Assistant. Absent the item four for the School Resource Officer.
I'll second that.
Wait, we got another. Really, you're getting me confused down there now. Motion's made. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Come on.
I wouldn't bring up, but there's errors on the personnel.
Discussion?
So in the supplementals, on page five, we have at the very bottom, and the only reason I know this is because in this evening, we're hiring a teacher for JS Wilson in music, and we're paying the former teacher next year as the supplemental. Do we have other errors in the supplemental list for people who have resigned or moved on?
I can take a look at that.
It's, yeah, it's five up from the bottom.
Which item, Mike? Which item, Mike?
Is, I'm on page six. JS Wilson, music, PMA.
$570.92 for.
Page six.
Christopher Williams, right?
Correct.
Page six? Yeah, we can, we can change that on the next report.
But we're voting on it.
We're approving it tonight.
Right, so that he, he, and, and I could see where the confusion would have come from. Because when he resigned his position, he resigned his position as a music teacher. So it must not have gotten back in the system and resigned it from the supplemental that was on because it was on approved separately. So we can go back in our system and make a correction and have the official letter go through.
How do we know there aren't any other errors? Who looks that over?
We take a look. That was a mistake. Tony, so you want us to pull that right now or?
Well, I'm unclear as to which item we're talking about.
Page six.
Page six. All the page, JS Wilson. It's the second, uh, one in the middle for $570.92. So why don't we just remove that one from?
Make a motion to amend.
Motion to amend.
Make a motion to, we, we remove the JS Wilson initials WC with, and remove WC from the supplemental list.
On page six.
On page six. Can I have a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion.
Is the, is the person that's replacing WC going to end up getting that statement? But we can probably assume that, right?
Yes.
Should we insert that person in now or not?
I think, I would prefer we'll clean it up later.
Yes.
Okay.
Any further discussion on this? Favorites, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Yes, you have a question, just as a follow-up. I know this kind of, so going forward, would there be a process in place? So when people resign, double check against supplementals?
Absolutely.
Is the time resignations and moving on? Can we just verify that all the remaining names are right? That nothing else, because if one skipped through, there could have been others that skipped through.
Yeah, I'll go back and double check.
Or in the past, haven't we just not had a name there, but we have the money amount?
I think you want to appoint the person.
Once they're hired.
Well, no, the position could change from year to year. For some of these stipends, I mean, there's no pointed person. They, if they prove the person, not the dollar, it's a dollar and a person.
Yeah, true.
I mean, the, the grade chairs can change from year to year, the, the coaches can change year to, I mean, we can't just blanket.
Does it, does it get renewed every year? If you were on a stipend last year and nothing happened, how does it, how does it work? Correct. So there's a, there's a running system that, that is currently in place. So if they did not resign from that system, then they would have rolled over. What I'm saying is that it was most likely a mistake that we will work to, to fix. Just a procedural error. Understood. Okay, you already moved this forward. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, Adam, 3.06, rescind referral bonus offer. And Dr. Kavanaugh, I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about this one.
This was apparently approved under past administration and to our knowledge, never went anywhere. I'm not sure, I mean, I remember the board meeting when we went back and looked at to see that it was approved, but I'm not sure that any communication ever went out following the approval. So therefore we don't know why it's still there and we don't see a need for it. So we just want to rescind it.
I'd like to make a motion that item 3.06, we approve and move to the board at the end of the month. A second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, job descriptions. Item 3.07, administrative officer job description. Item 3.08, child accounting manager job description. 3.09, operations analyst job description. 3.10 stipend position job description. 3.11, student service secretary job description. And 3.12 varsity soccer assistant coach, boys, girls, job description. Like to make a motion that we move 3.07 through 3.12 to the end of the month. Can I have a second please?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I'll ask the question, are all these positions in the budget?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Hello, Mr. Kabulka, child accounting manager says new. It's in the budget. Is this, are we retiring an existing position and changing the job title to a different title? And there's already an incumbent with, in the role that's just going to have a new title? Or are we resigning, retiring someone and hiring for a new position?
Go ahead.
Looking to hire a new position from, but the net, the total positions will net to zero. Is that the question you're asking to try to be direct about?
Yes, because when you don't put, you know, the salary range for it and it's a new child.
Yeah.
And it's not in the matrix, it's like, okay, this is an existing rate, it's a different rate. Do you have, you know, just critical thoughts? 10 years of experience seems a little excessive for this job title. And five years of leadership, when you look at the admin officer and you put three years experience. I think that's a lot as part of a position of that level that you're looking for 10 years.
So I can speak on behalf of that a little bit here is, is internally a, a direction that we're really trying to move into is when these positions are coming forward and we're revising job descriptions throughout the cases. For management, we're trying to stick to about 10 years of experience or equivalent is general census of what we're trying to go with. In regards to the admin officer, as Dr. Jablonsky, but for overall, that's the structure we've been trying to keep with moving forward. Again, these will be revised as they become open and available and we'll eventually have them all updated. But you can go back, I'll use the controller job description as another example of that. So that's by 10 years of experience. And as far as the administrative officer, that's not a, a new position that's currently being hired. We're trying to do that as in terms of for this phase of the process with this internal equity that we're trying to establish. It's with the new positions. And then as we move forward, we have a timeline for going through all of the current positions. The administrative officer is just a revision of the current position. It hasn't gone through what Aaron was referring to with our internal equity. So we're working through that to make sure that across the board, everything is aligned.
And speaking on the admin officers, I made it very clear to the board, the admin officer positions have gone away besides this one. This one will also be going away at the conclusion of this year. This is to get us through this year to move this person into a different role as we continue to make some improvements into what we're doing at the administrative level.
This is a lower level management position. 10 years is excessive for low level. Most senior managers talking 10 years. Think you're, you're limiting your job pool, your applicant pools, or you're trying to constrain your pool to candidates. Personal pay.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, on 3.12, the varsity soccer assistant coach, looking at the qualifications. It says that number one teacher certification preferred, but the one I'm concerned with is number two CPR training preferred. I'd like to see that changed to CPR training mandatory with AED. For at least, if it's not the assistant coach for the coach, for one, at least one of the two, if, if any of our sports programs have two, that at least one of them is required to be CPR and AED certified. Because if they're by themselves and there's nobody else around, that's, that's a pretty minor ask to take a CPR course to be able to save a student's life. We do train all of our coaches. So this is just for the actual hire when they first apply. We prefer that they have it coming in. If they don't, all of our coaches are trained and they're actually trained by Mr. Sanbaccino here. So all of our coaches are trained.
Did not know that. Very good. Can they refuse?
Do they all pass?
Okay.
Um, that would be a good question. Honestly, I've never heard anybody, we've told them as part of their employment, they needed to do it and they've all done it. So I don't know why you would refuse. I mean, as long, I agree with Mr. Kabulka, as long as most of our coaches, there's at least two or three coaches, sometimes four or five on staff. As long as a few of them are there, who are always going to be present, I think we'd be safe. But I've never had anybody refuse, so this is an interesting question.
Everyone just says, I don't want the liability, I refuse. It's not a requirement, so it's Mr. Kabulka's point. You're assuming they're good natured, they're going to do it.
Oh, it's not.
I'd expect that they will all say yes, but.
It's not a requirement to originally apply for the position. Once they're there, we ask every year to get the certification. So we are asking them to do it as part of their employment. Along with the CPR certification, good for two, three years, two? Okay.
Not all job requirements are set forth in the job description. So if you provide a job requirement to an employee, they fail to refuse, I mean, that's the basic.
That answers my question. I just, just think it's very important that they can do that.
I agree.
Okay. That's, that's it for me.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Kabulka, item 4.01, no informational items this evening. 5.01, questions from the public, any questions from the public on any of the agenda items? Seeing none. 6.01 adjournment, like to make a motion that we adjourn the personnel and policy committee meeting. Can I have a second, Mr. Kabulka?
I will gladly second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, President Wunschel.
Hey, we need to take about a five minute break here before we move to finance. So our IT director can reboot the system to go live on our feed.
Our next and final committee meeting this evening is Financial Operations, Sir Lindner.
Thank you, President Wunschel. So Connor, can we have roll call, please?
Mr. Lindner?
Here.
Ms. Pasquale?
Here.
Mr. Wunschel?
Here.
Item 1.02, the approval agenda, I'd like to bring forward as a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
2.01, I'd like to bring forward the Finance and Operations Committee meeting minutes from May 13th. Can I have a second for that?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, sorry.
We have multitude of items this evening, I believe we have 22. Some of them are reoccurring in nature, so it's been, it's not as bad as it seems. Probably bring them in a few blocks here. So the first ones, and Mr. Toll, if you want to talk about some of these as we move through, if you feel necessary. So we'll start with the first one. 3.01 is our insurance renewal with First National Insurance Agency for 2425. Estimated premiums at this point are $343,545. That will most likely change between now and the end of the month when the policy is finalized, correct?
Uh, yeah, that's correct. I, I think our insurance building values are a little low as we've invested $150 million into our buildings that our insurance values need to reflect as such. So between now and then, that will be the resulting factor of why the premium will change is because of the building values.
3.02 is our insurance management company for workers, comp insurance, insurance renewal for 2425. Premiums for that are $133,106. 3.03 is an agreement with Assessment Evaluations, Inc., and this is for evaluating tax appeals on behalf of the school district. 3.04 is Ash Enterprise International Agreement. And this is the annual preventative maintenance done to the planetarium at MIHS for everything goes as planned. $5,5250 with other outlined fees should they find issues while doing their preventative maintenance. 3.05 is a memorandum of understanding with the Child Development Center. This aligns cooperation between the CDC and MTSD as required as the Every School Succeeds Act. This is done annually as well. 3.06 is the Child Development Center Transition Agreement with MTSD for 2425. And this outlines the transition between the CDC and MTSD outlining guidelines for pre-K and kindergarten so that those students come into our system. We have information on them. 3.07 is a rate change for legal services for special education representation for 2425. 3.08 are the base and cover rates for medical, dental and vision plans for 2425. 3.09 is an update to the adult breakfast food service price, 285. But I don't believe we brought that forward the previous month because breakfast is free for all of our students, but we needed to readdress that for our adults. That is cleaning that up. 3.10 is cooperative purchasing agreements. This is just cooperative groups that we can purchase through that contracted price is already there, so we don't have to bid. There is a list of companies listed there for us to see. And then 3.11 is the annual copy paper quote to, probably much to the chagrin, a little bit more than we like. We're buying it by the truckload. But that is the yearly truckload cost at $24,133.20. I'd like to make a motion to bring item 3.01 through 3.11 forward as a block. Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on any one of those 11 items?
So on the printing, do we take that all the way down to the individual? I mean, you're encouraged to use a print shop, right? At the beginning of the year, if you don't print your stuff out for the entire year and you're just going to the copier every day and running 100 copies, do we, do we look at that?
Yes. We know exactly how much each individual prints, we do. We're looking at different ways to further enhance our ability to push printing to print shop.
Understood, thank you.
Just be clear, 311 is just the paper, not the actual copiers.
Yeah, there's a per click charge in addition to all the paper.
In addition to the paper, which is more expensive typically than the paper.
Which is the cheapest click charge is at the print shop, that's why we push.
Understood.
Hey Mike, could I interrupt for a second? I got a text from a taxpayer that says that we're not on YouTube, that it, it, it cut out like an hour after an hour and 10 or something. So after we did the reboot, did YouTube go away?
That was why we paused.
That's why we took the five minute pause, the reboot.
But it's not back.
It, it is, I'm watching it right now.
It is, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill, for making sure we were good. That contract, any other questions on 3.01 through 3.11? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
3.12 is donate, two donations to the PAR team, one from Chick-fil-A for $113.45 for lunch. Another one from Sherman Shoemaker Enterprise for $250. We then have 3.13 is the MEF Foundation Grants awarded. The MEF awarded four grants for a total of $7,156.05. They are for a tool storage units at the McDowell Center for Performing Arts, a school-wide book club, balance materials, help our students with oral muscular movement and for bridging foundations, preparing incoming kindergarten students for success. And for bridging foundations, preparing incoming kindergarten students for success. Item 3.14 is the exoneration of delinquent property taxes. This is what, for one piece of property with a balance of $901.30. And 3.15 is the write-off amount for students no longer enrolled at Mill Creek Township School District. And those are for a total of $40,307 in past student fees that are uncollectible. This, I would like to bring those four items, 3.12 to 3.15 forward to the board meeting at the end of the month. I have a second.
Second.
Any discussion on any of those four items? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, Aaron, would you like to talk about 3.16 and 3.17? Take those kind of together because they both kind of.
Yeah. Uh, so I suggest we are taking these as a block. Okay. Um, so 3.16 is our capital projects money a, at the end of the day. And uh, we're require, or asking to approve revenue in the amount of $728,000. And expenditures in the amount of $2,316,536. And how we got to those e, end results is this money has primarily been generated by us selling assets. And then we transfer those in such as Asbury Woods Nature Center, Vernon Dale, et cetera. We've had a number of those that we have sold over the years and that we've been building this balance up. Um, and then we have investment income and you could see that I just looked at, I, I just took 4.3 million. Hoping that the Federal Reserve, I mean, given where inflation's been and where it continues to trend, we will probably still have a pretty positive rate. On our money market account and uh, so $228,000 in investment income. And that, that's offset. So i, i, in the middle of this document that I provided, I, I really wanted to show the total of the project. Because our fiscal year ends June 30th, but the reality of it is so much is accounted for in June. That would be related to a different fiscal year than the work completed in July and August. So I wanted to show the total project cost, therefore you can really see uh, the impact over all of the fund as a result of those projects. But the breakdown of how we've got there, I mean, we use like 60, 65% of that cost. We assume will come out of 2425 for the auditorium project. The remaining out of 2526 for a grand total just shy of 2.2 million. That was the price that was approved by the board last month. Carpet and paint, we try to stick to about $500,000 a, a, a summer. Um, that does trend a little higher, a little lower depending on the year uh, in the projects. And uh, we did not receive, we wrote a grant for a security camera project and we didn't receive it. Uh, long story short, the district's wealth was one of the high consideration factors in the grant itself. And uh, when you looked at all the districts who did receive that grant funding, it was some of the districts with living in more of a less wealthy area. And uh, so it, rather than uh, not doing the security camera project we had projected with the, the grant, we're suggesting we use the capital projects fund. You can see at the bottom here is uh, we have about, it, we're estimating to have about $6.5 million in the fund. Take that, less the projects is just accounted for above, that takes our fund balance down to just shy of 3.8 million. Any questions related to the capital projects fund? Moving on to uh, 3.17, which is the Capital Reserve Fund. Uh, again, same concept here is we're, I was trying to show the total remaining amounts uh, left in these projects. And some of them we haven't even started yet, such as the window replacement or exterior restoration. These not, those values do tie back to our original bond resolution that was approved back in November in order for us to issue debt in uh, January. And then I tried to expand those out over the years. So you can kind of see uh, where the fund's going to be financially. I mean, this is all 100% bond money. A, a, at the end of the day, we had to spend it all. And uh, so there's a little bit of a really brief, high level cash uh, or financial statement multi-year that is associated here. So I, but it really boils down to is for the 24, 25 school year, we're requesting a revenue or revenue in the amount of $1,187,858. That is all investment income and expenditures in the amount of $28,477,949. Which is a lot of money to spend over one summer, just shy of $30 million um, in a three month, four month period. Um, and you could see as I, those are expanded out, uh, 26, out to 26, 27. School year, there is, we're showing a negative uh, fund balance. We originally projected about 1.4, 1.5 million dollars that we'd have to use from either the capital projects or general fund fund balance when we issued debt. Um, so that was already planned for. Uh, this doesn't account for change orders either from, I mean, it accounts for change orders as of June 6th. Not any future change orders, which will probably get us to that 1/6 number of a deficit at the end of the day. Um, any, any questions, concerns?
Thank you, Mr. Tull. So uh, like to bring 3.16, capital projects budget, 3.17, the capital reserve budget, and 3.18 counts payable forward as a block to the end of the month board meeting. Can I have a second for that?
Second.
Any question about any of those three items? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
To the home stretch now. Uh, item 3.19 through 3.22, we're going to bring forward as a block. 3.19, all of these are professional agreements with HHSDR. These are associated, uh, as you will notice, they are listed, most of these are listed in the capital reserve project that we just approved. 3.19 is the window replacement project. This is for windows and storefronts at MIHS in Bell Valley. The total compensation for HHSDR is four and a half percent of the total project cost for the design services. And an additional one and a half percent for the, of the total project cost for bidding, negotiating and construction management. Uh, so roughly, so for a total of 6% of total project. 3.20 is the electronic marquee sign project uh, for Chestnut Hill and JS Wilson. And that is for a, a lump sum of $5,000 per location for a total of $10,000. 3.21 is the exterior restoration project. This is again, a four and a half percent for design services, one and a half percent of the total project cost for bidding, negotiating, construction management. For the restoration of Bell Valley, Grandview, Ridgefield, Westlake. I missed some buildings there. I did miss some buildings tonight. Okay. Uh, it's the next one that has a block. And then the last one for 3.22, again, is the four and a half, one, one and a half percent. And this is for the design services and construction management, negotiating bidding for the 88 toilet project at Asbury, Bell Valley, Chestnut Hill, Grandview, JS Wilson, Walnut Creek, Westlake, Tracy, Ridgefield, McDowell, and the MEC. The only one not in there is MIHS because I believe that was done as part of the project. I'd like to bring uh, items 3.19 through 3.22 forward to the end of the month board meeting. Can I have a second?
Second.
Any questions on those four projects?
Yes, on, excuse me, on the 3 dot 20, the electronic marquee sign. I just wanted to make a comment that like the sign we have in front of McDowell. I'm assuming because it's a couple of years old, the um, quality of the graphics or whatever you want to call it is very poor. It's big dots. Um, I'm going to ask that the new signs that we get moving forward will have a higher resolution on the screen. Um, it looks more professional. Does that kind of make sense? Um, you know, I'm sure that the bigger dots are less expensive, but they just don't look very good in today's day and age.
Yeah, yeah. We'll make sure we look through all that before we make a decision.
Okay, thank you.
There's been so much discussion about the, the need for those signs in the last several years. It's come up over and over again. I'm, I'm sure they'll be thrilled with all the signs, whatever they look like. But thank you for checking on the quality of those signs.
And, and one further comment, I drove past um, Chestnut Hill today. And it still says like last day of school, you know, the eighth or whatever. But if we can get somebody to go out and take the letters off for the rest of the summer, so it doesn't say anything, since they're being dated. You know what I mean? Um, for any of our signs that are still mechanical, since the school year is over. And until, you know, if they want to put first day of school, August X, okay. But otherwise, if they can just clear them out, then it doesn't say anything. And that way they're not outdated. Otherwise, they're going to be like that for nine days.
I think it's out there, Mike, because it's a morale boost for the teachers knowing they have a summer off.
I, I can speak with personal knowledge of this. The, the Chestnut Hill sign is done by parents of members of the PTA.
Oh, really?
I didn't, my wife and I did it for, I think, five plus years. And there's another family that does it. We will update it continually throughout the summer. So it, it gets changed regularly. Who's in the audience here, she'll, she'll send us a quick little text, hey, can you put this up? And we put a whole bunch of random things up all summer long. It will not sit stagnant.
If we want to graduate the teachers, though, we could give them some cake and candy from Kooth. You know, so. Cause I'd rather have that than a pen and a sticker. Jeez.
This point that, we are, we are going to utilize their services for construction management, bidding and negotiating. Because we are just swamped.
Yeah. And uh, yeah. So, and then part of that was the flexibility, because they're going to keep track of it hourly and not exceed the 6%. Is if there's areas where I'm available to do more or less, whatever, they're going to be flexible with us. Um, the previous company obviously was very generous with the four and a half percent. Um, and, and sticking to that, uh, but also there was a lot of work. Um, and then uh, their, their work has fallen off a little bit, which is why we are bringing forward this, this new architect.
The $28 million worth of work, they require a little extra support.
Yes.
Any other discussion on those four items? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Okay. 4.01, we do not have any informational items this evening. 5.01, any questions from the public? Move us to 6.01 and I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion made. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. President Wunschel, back to you.
Thanks. Okay. All the committee meetings are over and we'll proceed to the committee of the whole meeting for Monday, June the 10th. That roll call.
Mr. Dean?
Here.
Ms. Philbeck? Well, Ms. Philbeck's absent, sorry. Mr. Kobelka?
Here.
Mr. Lindner?
Here.
Ms. Nusha?
Here.
Ms. Pasquale?
Here.
Mr. Wunschel?
Here.
Ms. Wunschel?
Here.
Dr. K.
3.13 is the MEF Foundation Grants awarded. The MEF awarded four grants for a total of $7,156.05. They are for a tool storage units at the McDowell Center for Performing Arts, a school-wide book club, balance materials. Help our students with uh, oral muscular movement. And for bridging foundations, preparing incoming kindergarten students for success. Item 3.14 is the exoneration of delinquent property taxes. This is what, for one piece of property with a balance of $901.30. And 3.15 is the write-off amount for students no longer enrolled at Mill Creek Township School District. And those are for a total of $40,307 in past student fees that are uncollectible. This, I would like to bring those four items, 3.12 to 3.15 forward to the board meeting at the end of the month. I have a second.
Second.
Any discussion on any of those four items? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, Aaron, would you like to talk about 3.16 and 3.17? Take those kind of together because they both kind of.
Yeah. Uh, so I suggest we are taking these as a block.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so 3.16 is our capital projects money a, at the end of the day. And uh, we're require, or asking to approve revenue in the amount of $728,000. And expenditures in the amount of $2,316,536. And how we got to those e, end results is this money has primarily been generated by us selling assets. And then we transfer those in such as Asbury Woods Nature Center, Vernon Dale, et cetera. We've had a number of those that we have sold over the years and that we've been building this balance up. Um, and then we have investment income and you could see that I just looked at, I, I just took 4.3 million. Hoping that the Federal Reserve, I mean, given where inflation's been and where it continues to trend, we will probably still have a pretty positive rate. On our money market account and uh, so $228,000 in investment income. And that, that's offset. So i, i, in the middle of this document that I provided, I, I really wanted to show the total of the project. Because our fiscal year ends June 30th, but the reality of it is so much is accounted for in June. That would be related to a different fiscal year than the work completed in July and August. So I wanted to show the total project cost, therefore you can really see uh, the impact over all of the fund as a result of those projects. But the breakdown of how we've got there, I mean, we use like 60, 65% of that cost. We assume will come out of 2425 for the auditorium project. The remaining out of 2526 for a grand total just shy of 2.2 million. That was the price that was approved by the board last month. Carpet and paint, we try to stick to about $500,000 a, a, a summer. Um, that does trend a little higher, a little lower depending on the year uh, in the projects. And uh, we did not receive, we wrote a grant for a security camera project and we didn't receive it. Uh, long story short, the district's wealth was one of the high consideration factors in the grant itself. And uh, when you looked at all the districts who did receive that grant funding, it was some of the districts with living in more of a less wealthy area. And uh, so it, rather than uh, not doing the security camera project we had projected with the, the grant, we're suggesting we use the capital projects fund. You can see at the bottom here is uh, we have about, it, we're estimating to have about $6.5 million in the fund. Take that, less the projects is just accounted for above, that takes our fund balance down to just shy of 3.8 million. Any questions related to the capital projects fund? Moving on to uh, 3.17, which is the Capital Reserve Fund. Uh, again, same concept here is we're, I was trying to show the total remaining amounts uh, left in these projects. And some of them we haven't even started yet, such as the window replacement or exterior restoration. These not, those values do tie back to our original bond resolution that was approved back in November in order for us to issue debt in uh, January. And then I tried to expand those out over the years. So you can kind of see uh, where the fund's going to be financially. I mean, this is all 100% bond money. A, a, at the end of the day, we had to spend it all. And uh, so there's a little bit of a really brief, high level cash uh, or financial statement multi-year that is associated here. So I, but it really boils down to is for the 24, 25 school year, we're requesting a revenue or revenue in the amount of $1,187,858. That is all investment income and expenditures in the amount of $28,477,949. Which is a lot of money to spend over one summer, just shy of $30 million um, in a three month, four month period. Um, and you could see as I, those are expanded out, uh, 26, out to 26, 27. School year, there is, we're showing a negative uh, fund balance. We originally projected about 1.4, 1.5 million dollars that we'd have to use from either the capital projects or general fund fund balance when we issued debt. Um, so that was already planned for. Uh, this doesn't account for change orders either from, I mean, it accounts for change orders as of June 6th. Not any future change orders, which will probably get us to that 1/6 number of a deficit at the end of the day. Um, any, any questions, concerns?
Thank you, Mr. Tull. So uh, like to bring 3.16, capital projects budget, 3.17, the capital reserve budget, and 3.18 counts payable forward as a block to the end of the month board meeting. Can I have a second for that?
Second.
Any question about any of those three items? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
To the home stretch now. Uh, item 3.19 through 3.22, we're going to bring To the home stretch now. Item 3.19 through 3.22, we're going to bring forward as a block. 3.19, all of these are professional agreements with HHSDR. These are associated, as you will note, that they are listed, most of these are listed in the Capital Reserve project that we just approved. 3.19 is the window replacement project. This is for windows and storefronts at M I H S and Bell Valley. The total compensation for HHSDR is four and a half percent of the total project cost for the design services and an additional one and a half percent for the, of the total project cost for bidding, negotiating, and construction management. So roughly, so for a total of 6% of total project. 3.20 is the electronic marquee sign project for Chestnut Hill and J.S. Wilson, and that is for a lump sum of $5,000 per location for a total of $10,000. 3.21 is the exterior restoration project. This is again, a four and a half percent for design services, one and a half percent of the total project costs for bidding, negotiating, and construction management for the restoration of Bell Valley, Grandview, Ridgefield, Westlake. I missed some buildings there. I did miss some buildings tonight. Okay, that's the next one. And then the last one for 3.22, again, is the four and a half, one, one and a half percent. And this is for the design services and construction management negotiating bidding for the 88 toilet project at Asbury, Bell Valley, Chestnut Hill, Grandview, J.S. Wilson, Walnut Creek, Westlake, Tracy, Ridgefield, McDowell, and the M E C. The only one not in there was M I H S because I believe that was done as part of the project. I'd like to bring items 3.19 through 3.22 board to the end of the month board meeting. Can I have a second?
Second.
Any questions on those four projects?
Yes, on, excuse me, on the 3 dot 20, the electronic marquee sign, I just wanted to make a comment that like the sign we have in front of McDowell, I'm assuming because it's a couple of years old, the quality of the graphics or whatever you want to call it is very poor. It's big dots. I'm going to ask that the new signs that we get moving forward will have a higher resolution on the screen. It looks more professional. Does that kind of make sense? You know, I'm sure that the bigger dots are less expensive, but they just don't look very good in today's day and age.
Yeah, yeah, we'll make sure we look through all that before we make a decision.
Thank you.
There's been so much discussion about the need for those signs in the last several years. It's come up over and over again. I'm, I'm sure they'll be thrilled with all the signs, whatever they look like, but thank you for checking on the quality of those signs.
And one further comment, I drove past Chestnut Hill today, and it still says like last day of school, you know, the eighth or whatever, but if we can get somebody to go out and take the letters off for the rest of the summer, so it doesn't say anything instead of being dated, you know what I mean? For any of our signs that are still mechanical since the school year is over and until, you know, if they want to put first day of school, August X, okay, but otherwise if they can just clear them out, then it doesn't say anything and that way they're not outdated. Otherwise, they're going to be like that for nine days.
I think it's out there, Mike, because it's a morale boost for the teachers knowing they have the summer off.
I can speak with personal knowledge of this. The Chestnut Hill sign is done by parents of members of the PTA.
Oh, really?
My wife and I did it for, I think, five plus years, and there's another family that does it. We will update it continually throughout the summer. So it gets changed regularly. Who's in the audience here? She'll, she'll send us a quick little text. Hey, can you put this up? And we put a whole bunch of random things up all summer long. It will not sit stagnant.
If we want to graduate the teachers, though, we could give them some cake and candy from youth, you know, so. Because I'd rather have that than a pen and a sticker. Jeez.
This point that we are, we are going to utilize their services for construction management, bidding and negotiating because we are just swamped.
Yeah, and, yeah, so, and then part of that was the flexibility because they're going to keep track of it hourly and not exceed the 6% is if there's areas where I'm available to do more or less, whatever, they're going to be flexible with us. The previous company obviously was very generous with the four and a half percent and sticking to that, but also there was a lot of work. And then their work has fallen off a little bit, which is why we are bringing forward this, this new architect.
The $28 million worth of work, they require a little extra support.
Yes.
Any other discussion on those four items? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
4.01, we do not have any informational items this evening. 5.01, any questions from the public? Move us to 6.01, and I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion made.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
President Winchell, back to you.
Thanks. Okay, all the committee meetings are over, and we'll proceed to the committee of the whole meeting for Monday, June the 10th. That roll call.
Mr. Dean?
Here.
Ms. Philbeck? Well, Ms. Philbeck's absent, sorry. Mr. Kobilka?
Here.
Mr. Lindner?
Here.
Ms. Nusha?
Here.
Ms. Pasquale?
Here.
Mr. Winchell?
Here.
Ms. Winchell?
Here.
Dr. Kavanaugh?
Here.
Attorney Senate?
Here.
And Mr. Brink is also absent.
Thank you. I think you make an announcement. There was an executive session held on Monday, June the 10th, 2024, for purposes of litigation and personnel litigation was in regards to Jennifer M. Zepiri as administricks to the estate of Alyssa Lee Hall versus Debbie L. Hardner and First Student, Inc., docket number 11789-23, Court of Common Pleas of Erie County. 1.02, approval of the agenda. May I have approval of the agenda?
Motion?
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against nay, motion passes. Please join me standing for pledge allegiance. 2.01, visitors. Do we have any visitors like to speak? One more time, any visitors like to speak? Okay, say none, one, two, item three, superintendent's report.
So I have two items this evening. Both went through committee earlier tonight. The first one will be 3.01, personnel report for June 10th, 2024.
Have a motion to accept the personnel report for June 10th, 2024.
Motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against nay? Motion passes.
President Winchell, we have in the audience the newly approved Chestnut Hill Assistant Principal. I don't know if she would want to say a couple of words.
Come on, come on up, please, and say a few words. Congratulations.
Well, my name is Amy Harris, and I am so pleased and thankful to be named Assistant Principal at Chestnut Hill, working with Kristen. And I want to say thank you to the original interview team who brought me on as administrative officer, because it was a great opportunity. And I got to see all five elementary schools, one each day every week, and get to know a lot of people. And I really just want to express how welcoming all the schools were. I ended up last year being at Asbury and Chestnut Hill only, and Skip and Kristen both encouraged me so much. And I just want to say thanks. I'm grateful to be here, and I'm really excited for the next year. So thank you to everyone.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
The second item on superintendent's report for this evening was 3.02, memorandum of understanding for the M E A supplementals.
Motion?
Second. Motion and second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay against? Motion passes. And for listeners' report.
So just one item to report on, another new case, another new decision coming out of the Commonwealth Court on May 16th, 2024. The Pennsylvania Department of Education had previously announced in regard to F A P, provided that students with disabilities that you had obligations, school districts had the obligation to continue F A P until the student's 22nd birthday. That was challenged in the court, and the court rendered a decision that the P D process for which they adopted this ruling was illegal, and therefore it's back to the age of 21, not to 22.
All right. Moving on, item five, old business, any old business. Item six, new business, any new business. And three remarks, item seven, Northwest Tri County. Just as always, the director's report is attached to the agenda, a couple, just a quick items, and they're all, a lot of links provided. There's seven education bills are receiving attention from the House Education Committee. Let's you read those. You may have seen or heard on news that year, year-round school for Philadelphia students will soon have a trial run. Speaking at city council budget hearing this week, the superintendents at a district is working on a model to fulfill the mayor's goal to stop the summer slide. So Philadelphia is piloting the year-round school. Don't hear anything on any of your superintendent's reports on that?
No.
Okay.
Yeah.
So he's sunny in Philadelphia. You know, kind of following up, it's nearly half of P A public school students have mental health need, and they found that two-thirds of the state's 500 school districts reported mental health needs is a challenge facing those schools. And May is Mental Health Awareness Month. On the federal level, U S, USDA releases final rule on child nutrition standards. New AI policy resource and webinar. So it is a webinar education on May 15th at 9:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m., and you can register online. So again, the link is right there on the attachment I have put. And one-third of the K through 12 teachers say that they have used artificial intelligence-driven tools in their classroom, according to the Ed Research Center survey, which included 498 teachers, was conducted in November, December, and cybersecurity improvements a priority for the majority of school districts. So just a couple of things, all those links and further articles are on that attachment on the agenda. I report. Moving on, 7.02, Erie County Technical School Report.
Brief note, this was the first year since the renovation was completed, the technical school was able to host their own graduation at the school. They did not have to host it off-site, so it was a very successful and positive event for the school to highlight the facility and all the great things that students are doing there and that a lot of great students into the workforce this year.
Thank you. Moving on to 7.03, school board remarks. Guess I'll start with a couple here. And thanks to Leanna for promote, to letting everyone know that this Thursday at J.S. Wilson at 6 o'clock will be the Gus Anderson Project Town Hall meeting. So, you know, I know that's been on our website, it's been on our Facebook page, a lot of people are interacting with me to say, geez, I'm going to be there, different groups I've seen. So thank you for that communication. Just want to encourage everyone to, to come and listen to the project manager, C H, C H A. And that's one of the things that they had said during their presentation, they looked for the community's input. So that is Thursday, June 13th. And on Wednesday is the M E F golf outing. And that's, shotguns start at 8 o'clock, but the raffles are there and baskets. So if you're not a golfer, come on up to the Whispering Woods and partake in everyone a nice basket. And relying on Mr. Dean here to carry the foursome.
You meant Mr. Brink.
Mr. Brink, okay. Both of you, okay. Any other school board remarks?
I just wanted to say after attending the McDowell graduation, how well-done it was, how organized it was. It just amazes me that they can do all of that in about two hours. And kudos to anyone involved in planning that.
Great night, yep. Any other comments?
Same. The graduation was really efficient. It was well-done. There's a lot that goes into that. So compliments to the administration. And Dr. Kavanaugh, you and I did speak, announcing where the kids were going to school and what they were studying, to me, was always a nice touch. I know we put it up on the board, but love to see us at least consider bringing something like that back. We had some kids going to Dartmouth and Stanford, Cornell, Rice. We had some great colleges. Love to see that announced. My personal opinion. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else? Dr. Kavanaugh.
So my closing remarks for this evening, we're focusing also on the McDowell graduation and the final congratulations to the class of 2024. As you heard throughout many of the different parts of the speech that I gave of just some of the highlights of how well some of these students are prepared for what's going to be next for them. And that was just, I could have gone on for pages and stuff. So I think this class is going to be very impactful in the future moving forward. So congratulations to the class of 2024. Congratulations to the McDowell team, including Mr. Buckholz, Mrs. Makleavage, and then Mrs. Means whole team, and all the teachers who gave up time that evening to make it a success. And I'd also like to give a shout out to all of our students and say I wish that everybody has a wonderful and safe summer. It was a great school year. I would like to thank our core team, and I would like to thank the school board because at the conclusion of the day Friday, it's officially the end of the first school year as being the superintendent. And I said that day one, it was an honor and a privilege, and it is still an honor and a privilege, and we have great things coming forward. So thank you to everybody.
Thank you, core team.
Appreciate it.
Okay, with that, item eight, committee of the whole adjournment. And the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Mill Creek Board of School Directors is the regular school board meeting. The meeting will be held on June the 24th, 2024 at 7:00 p.m. But a motion for adjournment, motion. Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against nay? For adjourn.